The Regional VOTEC School Committee to order.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Here.
Ms. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Ms. True?
Here.
Ms. O'Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Here. Already did the Pledge of Allegiance already? Next item on the agenda, oh, statement. For those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by Woodya VOTEC. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the chairperson who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Mass Wiretap Statute. First item is public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Public comment. Once, going twice. No one here for public comment. Next item on the agenda is going to be approval of the March 12, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Coppinger, seconded by Mr. Murphy. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Ms. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Bassis. Payments of the bill's financial report, treasurer's report for March. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. True, seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Bassis. Next item on the agenda, under communications, student representative report. Ms. Kaylee Habib, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all of the members of the committee meeting. Starting off with clubs, the Drama Club has been going strong and they've had multiple new people join in. Suter Government is hard at working, is hard at planning Teacher Appreciation Week, where they will celebrate the staff members. As they plan to look ahead at spring, they'll be planning their elections for next year's officers. Drama Club's Little Mermaid performance last month was a huge success. Thank you to everyone who also supported it. Now, the Drama Club is excited to announce their next event for the very first Spring Coffee House Talent Show. Join them Tuesday, April 15th at 6:00 PM for an evening of music, talent, and fun. Peer-to-peer Club's canned food drive is now in full swing. They'll be collecting the cans April 29th and donating the food to our local food bantries. Poetry Club meetings have been well-attended and members are starting their original poetry more openly and more proudly. Currently, they're planning on a few things to celebrate in National Poetry Month. In March, Multicultural Club prepared for the Second Annual Culture Night on March 14th, welcoming families who shared food drives, displays of the Philippines, Guatemala, Ecuador, the Dominican Republic, Puerto Rico, Germany, Sweden, Greece, Bolivia, Afghanistan, Poland, and Cameroon. Thank you all who participated and supported this event. Environmental Club had weather and UV-resistant signs made up by fact signs and plastow for their EnviroLog interpretive display. A Woodya Trash Cleanup Day is set for April 14th in honor of Earth Day with volunteers cleaning around the school. They're also promoting Haverhill Citywide Cleanup on April 26th through social media and school marketing. Interact Club has been working on Easter cards for Haverhill Nursing Homes, Baker Cats, and Oxford. Members of this club helped out during the concession stand at The Little Mermaid, and they also had a member participate in the Bradford Common Cleanup this past Saturday. Woodya Tech is gearing up for Skills USA State Leadership Conference in May, setting 57 students to compete on both CTE and leadership events. They recently wrapped up their community service project, have girls in the lacrosse program this year, with five of those players coming from our co-op school Amesbury. They're currently 0-1. The boys' lacrosse team are off to a strong start. They are currently 2-0, and their team is looking to qualify for the state tournament for the fourth consecutive year in a row. Their team has eyes set on competing for the vocational state tournament championship this year. Boys and girls track with over 100 students signed up for it this year. At the opening invitational, the girls' 100-meter school record was already broken, and they're excited for what's ahead this season. The varsity team had its season opener against Newton-South. The Wildcats won 5-0, while the Woodya pitcher threw a no-hitter. They graduated seven starters from last year's team, and they are working to fill in some key positions. This team is once again aiming to return for the MIAA state tournament. The varsity baseball squad features nine seniors along with several key players from last season's squad. A few young players are expected to play important roles this season. The team is also aiming for a strong year with a goal of returning to the MIAA tournament. Thank you.
Thank you. Great report as always, Mr. Early.
I want to congratulate you on your no-hitter.
Thank you.
Last week.
Yes, thank you.
Let's see. Next item on the agenda is going to be student presentation, economics class. You do not look like a student.
I just, good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman. What did he just say? No. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, rest of the school committee members. I'm standing here, the icing is going to be on the cake very soon, and I'm going to introduce the student. But I just want to preemptively read a letter that one of our teachers, that kind of spearheaded this whole operation, Jim Donahue Jr., he's a Woodya Tech US One Economics and Stock Market teacher. So let me just read a letter that he wanted you to hear. Dear School Committee, I'm writing to express my enthusiastic support for the superintendent and the school committee's initiative in introducing these essential classes. They provide our students with practical skills to face real-world challenges effectively. These courses serve as a cornerstone for empowering young minds to achieve financial independence while fostering a broader understanding of their role in an ever-evolving global economy. As we navigate a complex economic landscape marked with inflation, trade deficits, fluctuating interest rates, and national debt, the importance of financial literacy cannot be overstated. Equipping students with knowledge about long-term financial planning, such as constructing a retirement portfolio with low-cost index funds, is invaluable. Strategies like those advocated by Warren Buffett, allocating 90% in the S&amp;P 500 and 10% in bonds, offering timeless lessons in prudent investing. Additionally, the philosophy of Jack Bogle, a pioneer in index fund investing, emphasizes simplicity, long-term growth, and providing students with actionable insights for building their financial futures. As a parent to a daughter, I am particularly invested in ensuring that our young women have the knowledge and confidence to navigate financial markets independently, and it is vital that we cultivate these skills in all of our students, empowering them to take charge of their financial destinies. I am incredibly proud to work under a superintendent who is constantly prioritizing success and well-being of our students. Woodya Tech remains a shining example of excellence, forward-thinking in education, and I'm honored to be part of the remarkable institution. Thank you for your leadership and commitment to advancing our students' education. Sincerely, James Donahue Jr., Woodya Tech teacher, US History One, Economics, and the Stock Market Investor. Now, I bring to you Adam Alocke. Come on up, Adam, one of our seniors. Adam is in that class who took, as you know, we offer economics as well as the stock market. He's going to talk about it for electives. Adam is a Grade 12 Masonry student from Salisbury, Massachusetts. Adam is a Model UN, he's on the Model UN team, and recently participated at the Arctic Conference hosted by Fletcher School of Law and Diplomacy. He's also going to be attending Northeastern University of the UN Conference in Northeastern, May 2nd. He's going to Assumption University. He's going to go after his MBA, the MBA program, and also a civic friendship program. He's a Skills USA participant 2021 and 20 through 2025, so all his years here. He raised over $1,000 at a fundraiser for his masonry competition, and he's also a mason. I put in front of you today, Adam Alocke.
Welcome, Adam.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Mrs. Lynch. It's a pleasure to be here. Today, I'm here to advocate for our Economic and Stock Market Investing Class. So my background that Ms. Leganes also touched upon, I'm currently a current Masonry student here at Woodya Tech, co-op education program 2023 and 2024, and MTA, MTTA, Skills USA, Model UN, and future Assumption MBA Business Major. Now, unfortunately, Azilia isn't here with us today. She was unable to attend, but she did work with me on creating this slideshow. She's currently enrolled here at Woodya Tech in the Design and Visual Program. She was at co-op at CBS 2024-2025. She was the Girls' Varsity Basketball 2021-2025 Captain Senior Year and Varsity Lacrosse. She is the main sports photographer, Skills USA member as well, and she plans on going to Netco. She had a strong commitment to this slideshow as well, but it is, again, unfortunate that she was unable to attend. So this is just going to be the overview. So during my senior year, the 2024 and 2025 year, we learned about three crucial topics, the economic principles, stock market investing as well. In-depth, so economic principles are important for students to learn because, you know, there's nothing more important than understanding what to do with your money. Everybody's got money. Money is king, right? It's very important to understand how that dollar might fluctuate over the course of history. It's also crucial to learn about a country's economic history, so we touch back on Black Swan Events. Again, COVID-19, how it affects Wall Street and Main Street. Understand stock market investing. So we touched on this, so half our year was, you know, understanding economic principles, and the other half was focused on the stock market investing side of it. We understood how the S&amp;P 500 works, how it represents the health of the stock market. We learned from some of the great investors, Warren Buffett, Jack Bogle, and Kathy Wood, which I'll touch on later. A deep dive into the stock market, so, you know, we learned, again, the S&amp;P 500, it's top 500 companies in America, and how that really affects Wall Street, how it affects, you know, where your money is in a retirement fund, you know. It's an index fund, S&amp;P 500, 500 of the best companies, and really, it really does bring together the stock market. So these are a couple lessons from famous investors, and we all spent a brief time learning from each one of them. Each has having their own different investment strategies. So we have Warren Buffett, we have Jack Bogle, and we have Kathy Wood. So there's a couple quotes up there, a couple of their strategies, and we analyze them, and each one has a different portfolio approach, and it's all important to, you know, get different sides of opinions. Key investment types to build wealth, so, you know, these are kind of the key stuff that you want to put your money into when you're investing. You have your stocks, that's ownership in companies, high growth, risk, medium to high. You have your index funds, again, the S&amp;P 500. We have crypto, cryptocurrency. I know it's very popular right now, but it is extremely volatile, goes up and down almost every day. And we have bonds. It's a fixed income from government corporations, and there's very low risk on that. Building financial freedom and retirement planning. So retirement is, you know, a big topic, and I'm sure many of you are thinking about retirement, and we do touch on that. How to create a personal investment portfolio. So, you know, some of you, if you're in business, you might have a 401K. If you're in education, you might have a 403B. So what's in these? Index funds, mutual funds, everything that kind of makes your money grow, you know. You could also set up a Roth IRA, and this is, you know, away from your job, this is kind of your own personal account, and it's tax-free, it compounds interest, and you have a taxable brokerage account, you can put in anything that you want. And again, you know, teaching kids before they graduate, especially at a tech school, that are going into the workforce, that really kind of vague, now I'm different, you know, I was going to go into the workforce, but I decided to do another four years in the education, but it's important for kids to learn, you know, where to put this money and how to make this money grow over time. So this might what your ideal retirement portfolio look like, so this is Jack Bogle. We studied him, and this is usually the general retirement portfolio, so we have 60% index fund, so again, S&amp;P 500, you hear that name a lot. You have the international stocks, which is 30%, these are companies based outside of U.S., you have exposure to the global markets. Then you have your 10% in bonds, so this is loans you give to the government or companies, regular interest rates, and very low risk, and, you know, your dollar is compounding. Key takeaways, don't be one-dimensional. Make sure you're a financial fortress, make sure you have a structure, a fallback plan able to sustain you. So, you know, Mr. Donahue does touch upon a lot that you should have your own investment backup plan if anything were to happen to your employment status or whatever. Again, like touching on to the Roth IRA and the taxable brokerages account. It's also important to acknowledge the 12 assets of wealth. These 12 assets, right, so this really the 12, how your money's going to work for you, cash, you know. We learned that cash just sitting on your bed or in a shoebox or wherever it may be is just not, it's just not where it should be these days, you know. You should have it maybe in some real estate, invest in a property, bonds, stocks, index funds. You know, you have taxes advantage account, again, the Roth IRA, taxable brokerage. And then the number one, well, it is number 12 unfortunately, but last but not least is your education and trade, your skill. So again, you come from a tech school, you have that skill with you, and that's what makes you the money, you know, going forward in your career. This is why it matters, you know, with the rising cost of living and student debt, you know. Again, it is important to teach that 17, 18-year-old kid that's about to go into the workforce, where should I put my money once I start making, you know, real money, real dough? You know, where are you going to put it? How do I make my money work for me? And I think this class is really important. It really teaches me, you know, I'm fortunate, I'm going to college for another four years, but, you know, some kids, maybe electrical or plumbing, might be going right into the workforce. They need to know what they're going to do with this money, and I think this class really helps sums it up. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate your time, and thank you.
Questions from the committee?
Any questions?
Ms. True.
Just wondering, did you cover credit cards and interest rates and things like that? Was that something you?
So, in the Economic and Stock Market class, we did not, but in discrete math in our math classes, we did cover that, you know, check balancing loans and stuff like that.
Because it's really important.
Yeah, it is. That is another very important topic, yes. Any more questions?
Any other questions from the committee?
Sure.
Mr. Rossi?
So how likely do you think someone taking this course is going to try to set up a retirement account or an investment account?
When I, think, when I took this course, I had, you know, a very vague knowledge about retirement investing. I think that if you do take this course, and if you're a student like me and you give, you know, a good amount of your time to listen to what Mr. Donahue says or any teacher for that matter, you really, it's really going to put in your head, you know, to set up that retirement account. Maybe your company doesn't do it for you. I, yes, I would agree that 100%, if you take this course, it's going to teach you how to invest your money and make your money work for you over time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sure.
I think this is a great idea. I mean, I work with a lot of young guys at my day job, and they come in and it's all about making the dollar. It's nothing about how they're spending it or how they're saving it.
Exactly.
They don't learn that till probably five or 10 years. That's five or 10 years of 401K they missed out on.
And, and that is kind of what we're going to try and catch them early here, you know, it's, for me, this is their first year they were doing it, and I can say and I can speak for my other classmates, they're always asking questions because it is important, you know. You know, you go to work, whatever, you have your job, but what do you have as a fallback plan? What do you have as, you know, retirement, you know, when you're 59, 60, whatever that age might be when you're ready to retire, what money do you have saved up? You know, I do understand that, yes.
Any other questions? Real quick first, Mr. Donahue, I know him, known him for a long time, very good teacher.
Yep.
So you're in good hands. But I think this is a great course. I've said for a long time, I think financial literacy should be a required part of the curriculum in high school. If you look at the statistics, people that are even, you see them 30, 40 years old that haven't even started a retirement account yet. And then people that just don't understand the basics of managing money. I think it's extremely important that it's something we teach in the high school to prepare people for the real world. So I'm glad it's being done here, and you're a good example of what happens when these are done. So thank you for your great presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quite frankly, you know, we, even a year, you know, it's not enough time. I think it's a good basis, but even, you know, half the course or whatever, I think it takes a lot of time to teach somebody what to do with their money.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Lowell?
Yeah, just for clarity, I know you said you didn't address the financial literacy piece, but we do, we do have that requirement, and moving forward, and students have been offered financial literacy for at least four or five years, six years, seven years, long time.
Quite a few years now.
COVID. As a half-year elective, and it does cover all those basics for all students so that when they do leave, they do have those basic financial management skills, so they're able to start saving some money to put into investments.
Yes, yep.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Just a funny story about Adam. Four years ago, he stood up in front of his classmates, all 320 or 330 or so, as a young kid stood up in the assembly. And I said, any questions? Anybody stood right up. He says, you know what? I love this school and I love the administration. I said, kid, you got five passes.
Next item on the agenda is the Principal Assistant Superintendent Report, Mr. Leganes, School Calendar 25-26.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, rest of the school committee members. I know that was a tough act to follow. I have in front of you, if you can believe it, the 2025-2026 draft of the calendar. You know, just, I guess, some highlights, the new teachers will come and train the 19th, the 20th of August, and then all our teachers will report back August 26th. Those of you who like to pencil in, the open house is going to be November 2nd. Again, that's for Sunday in November. The Christmas Vacation and the Holiday Vacation we have, the front side will be Monday, Tuesday, and then all the schools, surrounding schools have the next few weeks off, just the way the calendar, you know, is situated. Also, if you go down, you can just fly down to, we have the graduation, the senior prom, the 26th next year, and then our graduations, the 28th. And then the last days will be the 11th, 12th, and that is without the snow day, so pretty self-explanatory. Just looking for.
Is there a motion to approve the school calendar for 25-26?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Lowell, seconded by Mr. Murphy. Any discussion on the school calendar?
Just a question.
Ms. True.
Just wanted to ask about the start date, the 19th and 20th, is that earlier than other years?
No, usually for the, for the new teachers, 19th and 20th. That's for the new teacher training, that's typical.
I could remember if that was what we did.
Yeah, it's usually typical, and then the following week, then everybody comes through the door.
Thank you.
And it does look like a very short summer when it's August is showing up.
Okay.
So thank you for the question.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Ms. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Bassis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Business Manager Kara Cosmos.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. I have a couple of things for you tonight. The first is the variance analysis. It is well, it's past nine months of the year, so we're kind of in the home stretch. And I'm actually going to take the wind out of Ms. True's sails because one of the things that she asked me was to explain, there's a little bit of a difference this year from what I usually do. You'll note at the back that there are different colors, and what we usually do is it's usually green or yellow. So yellow represents accounts that are in the negative right now, and a lot of that is because we do budgeting, sometimes a year and a half before we're using it. So the green, which is 340,897, is balance of accounts that I believe are going to be available at the end of the year. So a lilac is the amount of instructional hardware account that I believe will be available, which is 75,000. And I believe that there will be 300,000 between active, I'm sorry, 250,000 between active health insurance and retiree health insurance, and a lot of that is due to the fact that we had a 0% increase for active health insurance last year, and that also affected the retiree insurance. So those are the light blue and the pink colors. And then pink is bus drivers, and it's not that I believe there will be a savings in bus driver accounts, but we put most of the money in the bus driver account, and then as we use the other accounts like special ed and homeless and summer and after school, we move a lot of that money there because it's hard to know from year to year. But we are on track. One thing I did want to say is if it looks like the negative balance in salary accounts are higher than what you saw back in October, that's because the teachers have till October 1st to have their class increases, but we don't get a lot of those till sometimes the end of the month, and I had done a transfer after I met with all of you in October. But those are the ones that happened after, after that, and so those will be closed out at the end of the year.
Any questions? No questions on that. And then you have the Whitson's contract?
Alrighty. The second item in your packet is, I'm asking you to please approve amendment, excuse me, Amendment Number Two of the Food Service Management Contract with Whitson's Culinary. You have a memo in your packet, but just to remind you, the original RFP is for a five-year period. However, the State Bureau of Nutrition does require that the contracts be approved in one-year increments. Therefore, this is the second amendment, the second request I'm asking you to approve. The management fee will be 12,772. It was 12,238. And the administrative fee will be 59,494. It was 57,427. It is an increase of 3.6% based on the March U.S. Consumer Price Index food away from home northeast urban over the prior fiscal year. I also would like to share as a result of, not as a result, but I'd like to share some good news from our food service company as you're pondering this. On March 31st and April 1st, we underwent a food service administrative review. That usually happens about every four or five years. I'm happy to report that our corrective action plan contained absolutely no serious findings, but instead, a couple of minor housekeeping items that we have to take care of. One of them was we have to move a poster from someplace that is more visible in the cafeteria. Another one is that we have to expand our existing policy to include federally mandated civil rights language. But what I really wanted to share with you was that the reviewer could not say enough about how well our program was run and how positively the staff interacted with the students. And what she was most particularly impressed with was the conduct of our students. So I do want to thank Joanna Wood and the entire food service staff because they do do a great job to ensure that our students are eating well every day.
Is there a motion to approve the one-year renewal request?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. True, seconded by Ms. Lowell. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Tru?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Slabowski?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Liaison for Woodya Tech and Northern Essex Community College. Shon Ray again.
Good evening, school community members, Superintendent Lynch. Great to be with you here again tonight to update you on the exciting shared campus building project with Northern Essex Community College. Most of the work going on right now is with the municipal, municipal working group, which I can happily report that as of today includes representation from all eleven communities. The group met most recently this morning right here at the school. While I've characterized previous working group meetings as positive and optimistic in my reports, today was the best one yet, in my opinion, as it included two Rowley Select Board members. As you know, Rowley had been the lone holdout from the prior working group meetings, so we have participation from, uh, every city and town in the district now. The group briefly discussed the final UMass Donahue Report and Recommendations, which came out earlier this month, and which I sent you all, uh, copies or links to copies, along with our recent press release summarizing where we're at with the project and where we're headed in the near and short, short term. Our meeting today, uh, our meeting facilitator, Dennis De Doglio, gave a brief, uh, PowerPoint presentation explaining that the main driver of the shared campus proposal is to reduce costs for our communities by, number one, opening up potential new state, federal, higher ed, and private funding sources. Number two, utilizing existing potential shared space at the college. And number three, utilizing more suitable and buildable land at the college than is available at the current Woodya Tech site. There is also the option of selling or leasing the existing Woodya Tech property, which is owned by the district, to offset some of the costs of the building project at the college. The main agenda item this morning was discussion of the critical letters that we must provide to the Massachusetts School Building Committee, no later than July one of the summer, in order to continue to move forward with the proposed new Woodya Tech High School in partnership with and on the Neco campus in Haverhill. Every, every district, city, and town, including Rowley and a few others who have had some tough questions for us along the way, agreed to sign the MSBA letter by the June one, by June one. District will pay the estimated two point five million cost of the new project feasibility study. The state provided a significant monetary contribution towards the cost of the first study for the unsuccessful high school building project last year at the Woodya Tech site. Therefore, MSBA has said the district must pay the full cost of the new study for the shared campus building project proposal. Superintendent Lynch and Neco President Elaine Glenn have committed to, uh, paying at least five hundred thousand each from existing school funds for a total of one million toward the, toward the existing, uh, toward the two point five million dollar estimated cost of the study. Woodya Tech's part would be, of course, subject to approval by the Woodya Tech School Committee. That would leave the eleven cities and towns to share the remaining estimated one point five million, which would be assessed to each community using the existing regional capital funding formula. The local officials asked that their estimated financial contributions towards the study be put in writing, and that the MSBA letter include a table showing how much each community is gonna be expected to pay towards the feasibility study. It was noted that the feasibility study funds from the communities would not be needed for at least a year from now, and that the cities and towns would not be asked to approve these funds until around this time next year. As a refresher on the timeline, if MSBA receives the required letter this summer, Woodya Tech is expected to progress into the eligibility phase of project consideration this August. The feasibility study is expected to begin in the summer of two thousand twenty-six. Design, cost estimates, and creation of a new regional agreement and capital funding formula that includes the state and the college as partners would take place during the feasibility study. Superintendent Lynch explained that the Donahue Report would be incorporated into the feasibility study to develop the learning plan for the new school, which would drive the project's design and governance. Any future district-wide vote on the project is ex- is, is expected to be at least four years away. The second thing the group asked for this morning to be added to the letter they're working on is wording, stressing, and specifying that the attention of all eleven communities is to, quote, "create a new regional agreement for a shared campus model at the N E C C site," unquote. Everyone agreed that they are only interested in the shared campus model at N E C C and not building a new high school at the current site, which was the proposal defeated at the district-wide election a year ago. Superintendent Lynn said she would impress that upon the MSBA at a meeting she has with them tomorrow. To show unanimity, the group agreed that they would fulfill the MSBA letter requirement with a single letter signed by the chief executive of each city and town. The local official asked that the working group continue meeting through at least the feasibility study phase, and that they be kept informed during the formal search for first, an owner's project manager, and then an architect for the shared campus building project. They also asked that a member of the Woodya Tech School Committee, this group, attend future working group meetings, as well as a member of the new school building committee when that panel is formed during the eligibility period, which again is expected to begin in August if everything goes according to plan. The next working group meeting is May sixth at the college. Uh, just give you a quick word on communications. Uh, formal communications documenting the municipal working group meetings and a monthly newsletter are coming soon. And regular project updates are available and continue to be posted on the Woodya Tech and Neco websites. Project updates also occur at monthly Woodya Tech Regional School Committee meetings, as I'm doing here tonight right now. The websites, um, for anyone who doesn't know, are www.wittyatech.org and www.n e c c dot m a s dot e d u. Beyond the working group, and as you may know, the UMass Donahue Institute Final Report and Recommendations came out last week, and it has been posted on our project, project website and was sent to all you, or at least links, along with a new press release on the project, which led to a couple of, uh, good news stories you may have seen. The Donahue Report, um, it's, it's almost a hundred pages. It's got lots of great information, um, which, you know, you might wanna take a look at. Its most significant recommendation, um, is that the Woodya Tech and N E C C should pursue a, quote, "collaborative shared campus model" in which the two schools share space and services, unquote. So, that's my report. Happy to, uh, try to answer any questions.
That's, first of all, that's great news. So, thank you for the good news. Any questions? Uh, I think I saw Mr. Rossi first, then Mr. Lai, then Mr. Early.
Um, changing the agreement, is that gonna be a different committee from this working group that does that? Like, have, have they talked about what that looks like and the process for that?
Yeah, it would take place during the feasibility s- study, which is overseen by the S, by the MSBA, and, um, it would be, yeah, it would be in the purview of the, of the, uh, the, the new school building committee, which will include, which all the, uh, uh, all the cities and towns will appoint their representatives. That'll be the school building committee, and they'll work, um, you know, with the MSBA and with this school committee, um.
In developing the agreement to have its funded?
Correct, but, uh, the superintendent might wanna add to that.
Yeah, if I can just jump in.
Yep.
I, I think the working group probably will be, because it's your mayors and your town managers, I think they really want to be involved in developing the regional agreement. Um, but that regional agreement will not necessarily be coming through the eligibility phase, but through the feasibility phase of the project.
And does that agreement, um, will that occur, like, will that be prior to the building being done? Like, how does that?
Yes, yeah. I don't think MSBA will allow us to, uh, do anything until we have a solid regional agreement before we can move forward.
Right. So, we could be in this building under a new regional agreement?
Uh, not necessarily, because I think people want it for the new building. So, I think that those are things that, there are still a lot of things that we have to work through. So, um, yeah.
Okay, only for that. Right, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Today, today was a very good day where everybody, uh, you know, and I, you skipped the one sentence about Mayor Barrett saying, um, we all have something we can agree on.
Right.
Um, I think everybody was, was felt very positive today when we left that we were all going in one direction. Um, so that, that was really great news today.
Uh, just real quick, uh, the cities and towns don't appoint the building committee, correct?
They have to, it, part of the letter that they wrote us is they, they want to have a say in that.
A say in that?
Yeah.
Okay. Who did it last time?
The, the, well, I think of all of us. I think we just, I mean, found people that were interested in being a part of the school building committee, but I think this will be a much more formal process.
Okay. Mr. Lai?
Uh, curious about the two point five million estimate for the feasibility study. What's, what was the basis for that estimate?
So, I'll answer that.
Oh, good.
Um, so we've talked to other vocational schools that have recently done studies, um, and that's sort of the ballpark number. Today, um, there was some, um, they really want to know if we are gonna contribute to that feasibility study. Um, I have some concerns about that because I can't commit until I know what's going on with our wastewater treatment plant, um, and that's been my feeling. Um, but, you know, I am gonna ask, um, it, it might be a special meeting, that we can commit five hundred thousand to the feasibility study, um, so that, because they're really looking for, for something to offset those qu- that, those costs. Um, and, you know, we hope later on that we'll actually be able to offset it more, but right now, um, I feel like that's very concerted, conservative while we're thinking about what's coming down the pike for us. Thank you.
Mr. Early?
The balance of the one point five million, do these towns and cities have to go out for votes on that?
Not necessarily, no. It's just like how we would, uh, assess a capital cost. Um, and so, you know, we just approved a capital cost of six ninety-five. So, that would be what we would be a- actually presenting to them again, and it would be based on the regional agreement.
So, they've all agreed that they're gonna get their, their, uh, shares, they'll pay?
They know that they, that is part of what they're signing on is that they will help pay off that feasibility study.
And where is that formula coming from?
They would like us, they would like us to commit to offsetting some of that cost.
Yeah.
And that formula, and that formula comes from the regional agreement.
The regional agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Lai?
To follow up, Clifford. It would be my understanding that this, the local appropriating authority at each community would have to take a vote to appropriate the money for the feasibility study, correct? So, the city council of Newburyport, for example, would have to vote to appropriate their share?
Mm-hmm. Right, just like we, they would do for our capital assessment, yes.
Anyone else? Ms. Lowell?
Just for clarity, 'cause I know there was a lot of debate over the last year about who could change and how would this new agreement be made. This committee would be handed a new agreement that would be developed by that group, that working group. We are, we're not a part of that, and we're not the approval process of that.
You guys are like three steps beyond me, so, I mean, that, I, I don't wanna be, answer it wrong.
Yeah.
Um, but I do think that the municipal group would like to, in, in, in last summer, they did work on certain parts that they wanted to work on. Um, I believe that that mus- municipal group will work on that, and then eventually it will come back here, but I, you're a couple steps ahead of me, so.
I think that, mm, I think in it's which, you have to vote on a capital improvement at town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So that, I mean, like, so we would, like, we're gonna miss this, we're voting on the capital improvement, you know, in May fourteen?
Mm-hmm. Right.
For this year, but, so for this million and a half?
Right.
That would have to go to a, to a, a town meeting.
And I, and I believe it would, what we're thinking is that we would be able to split it up over two years, the feasibility study, so that's what we're hoping. But the cities and towns, what MSBA is looking for is for them to commit to paying for that feasibility study.
Mr. Early?
Who's gonna actually do the, uh, feasibility study? We're gonna have to go out and get an outside firm?
MSBA has a very prescriptive, uh, way to, to get OPMs and, um, architects, the whole thing. So, it's a very prescriptive method that we will have to use.
So, going through the, the state?
The process, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Powell, you're up.
Yeah, quick question on if, um, your feasibility study goes to town meeting for some of the local towns. Will, um, if it doesn't pass, what if, as far as our options go for funding, if it doesn't pass the town meeting?
Well, a- as someone said today, um, if, if the towns don't approve the feasibility study, then, you know, let us know now so that we can move forward. Um, what the municipal leaders have told us is they are committed to that. They have to, you know, bring that back to their city and town.
Would every town have to approve it?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's part of the capital project. Just, if, think of it as the same as what we're doing right now, as far as sending out our capital project.
Yeah. Right, okay.
So, two-thirds.
Anyone else? Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Uh, next item on the agenda, admissions updates. Christine Morrison, Director of People Personnel.
And I'm sorry to say, Ms. Morrison is, uh, ill, so I will be doing the admissions update. So, uh, in your packet, you receive the admissions update, uh, for this school year or for next school year, uh, for freshmen for the twenty twenty-five applications. Um, we had six hundred and fifty-nine students complete their application, um, and we have accepted three hundred and seventy-five students as of right now, and we have two hundred and eighty-four students that are waitlisted. Um, and I really wanna thank the guidance department, um, really everyone. It is a full, the, everyone, think about that. We had six hundred and fifty-nine students that needed to be interviewed, um, and they did all of that work. So, I just really wanna thank the guidance department, the Director of Guidance, Jill Krakowitz, Christine Morrison, and the Director of People Personnel. It's a lot of work, um, but they got, they met that June, that, um, April first deadline. And, um, we're looking forward to seeing the, the next class come through.
All right, any questions? Seeing none, you're up anyway, Madam Superintendent.
So, my update, uh, on Friday, March twenty-first, I attended the Woodya Tech, um, Northern Essex Municipal Working Group meeting. Uh, this meeting, we continued to discuss a path forward. On Tuesday, April first, and Friday, April fourth, I had remote meetings with Elaine Glenn, the President of Northern Essex. And I just really wanna say, um, a huge thank you to, um, President, um, Glenn. Um, he has been amazing to work with, his team, Mike McCarthy. Um, they've been amazing to work with in, in helping navigate through this, it's difficult territory. Um, and they really have, have done yeoman's work, um, with me to try to make this happen for our kids and for our staff. On Thursday, April third, I attended the M A S S Executive Committee meeting in Marlborough. Um, there was discussion about graduation requirements, D E S I, um, collecting staff attendance, uh, and federal and school aid, which is obviously something that we are all still very concerned about. On Friday, April fourth, I met with Allerton Associates, our PR company. We continue to discuss ways we can communicate with our eleven cities and towns, um, about the possibility of, of working with Northern Essex Community College. That was brought up again. They really are, are, want to make sure that we all are trained, our school committee, and then also the school building committee, and that we can get out and, and share the message, um, with, with everyone in our community. So, you know, one of the things I would like to do is either, um, early fall or late spring, set up a time where we can get some training ourselves to start working on how we can go about doing, send, uh, bringing that message to our communities. On Tuesday, April eighth, I attended the Mary Mac Valley Executive Committee meeting in Lawrence. On Tuesday, April eighth, I attended the Haverhill City Council meeting. President Elaine Glenn and I were able to give an overview of the work we've been doing so far. The city council seemed very much in favor of us moving forward together. I wanna thank Kara Cosmos and Committee Member Dick Early for attending last night's meeting. Today, I attended the remote meeting with Mass Development, um, with Northern Essex. This was an opportunity for us, us to discuss possible opportunities for Woodya Tech if the school moves to Northern Essex Community College. Today, I attended the Woodya Tech, Northern Essex Municipal Working Group meeting. I'm happy to report that all eleven cities and towns were in attendance. We had a very robust and productive meeting. I believe all the cities and towns are moving together in the right direction. I wanna thank Elaine Bueker for an amazing play production of Little Mermaid, um, and, you know, it was great to see the kids. They did an amazing job. Ms. Bueker gave hours and hours and hours of her time to, to make that happen for, for our community, and I just really wanna thank her publicly for, for that work. I also wanna thank Deb Santos. Uh, we have had a Scholastic Book Fair at school over the last week, um, and it's been great to see the kids excited about literature. Um, and they've been buying books, and some of our staff have been buying books, so, um, that's been great. Um, for the school committee, there is Day on the Hill. I don't know if you've received the information for Day on the Hill. Um, that is on May sixth from nine to eleven-thirty at the UMass, um, Club in Boston, and then we head over to the State House, and that's when, uh, we have vocational, uh, students provide amazing lunch for us. Um, if any of you have ever been, I do plan on attending 'cause I think it's a worthwhile event, um, and I've enjoyed going and hearing about what's going on, and, and then also having a great little snack for ourselves. I have two field trips. I have a field trip for the Auto Tech Program to the New England Dragway in Epping, New Hampshire, and that field trip is set to go on May thirtieth.
You wanna just, we'll take them both at the same time? What's the other ones?
Sure. The other one is an overnight field trip for Skills USA at Best Western Royal Plaza Trade Center. We have, uh, we have a lot of students attending that, um, fifty-five stu- approximately fifty-five students attending.
All right. Is there a motion for, to approve the field trip requests? Ms. Lowell, seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald. I don't even have to look. Mr. Early, question?
We have the proper paperwork.
We will have all the proper paperwork.
Thank you.
What, what town is the second field trip in?
Marlborough.
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 Any other questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Tru?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Passes. Old business, the school committee's self-evaluation, we have those results here, we'll go over them quickly with everybody. The committee's policies are clear and up to date, five agreed, three disagreed. Committee adopted a mission statement, five agreed, strongly agree, excuse me, one agrees, and four, excuse me, two don't know. The committee members take part in educational workshops and conferences to make informed decisions, three strongly agree, three agree, and two disagree. Members receive introductory training and orientation when they join the committee, two strongly agree, four agree, one disagrees, and one doesn't know. Procedures and protocols for committee operations are published and understood, one strongly agrees, five agree, one disagrees, and one doesn't know. Members treat each other with courtesy and respect, six strongly agree, two agree. All members are encouraged to voice opinions and take positions on the issues, six strongly agree, one agrees, and one disagrees. Members respect the will of the majority and support the decision, seven strongly agree, one agrees. Members share pertinent information with each other to prevent surprises and promote informed decision-making, five strongly agree, two agree, and one disagrees. Members do their homework and come prepared to make decisions, seven strongly agree, one person disagrees. Members understand the role of the individual as part of the whole group, seven strongly agree, one agrees. Committee regularly evaluates the superintendent using a mutually agreed-upon process, six strongly agree, one agrees, and one doesn't know. The types and frequency of communications are agreed to in advance, six strongly agree, one agrees, and one doesn't know. The superintendent's accessible to committee members, eight strongly agree. The committee members contact the superintendent when seeking information, eight strongly agree. The superintendent informs the committee of major personnel decisions, six strongly agree, one agrees. The superintendent and committee treat each other with mutual respect and professionalism, seven strongly agree, one agrees. The committee and the superintendent operate on a no-surprise model, six strongly agree, two agree. A long-term strategic plan exists and is reviewed, five strongly agree, two agree, and one disagrees. The constituencies of the school district are involved in the strategic planning process, five strongly agree, one agrees, and two don't know. The budget document is, the budget process is documented and published, six strongly agree, one agrees, and one disagrees. Budgets are developed based on needs from the bottom up, five strongly agree, two agree, one doesn't know. The committee as a group presents and advocates the budget to the community, three strongly agree, three agree, one disagrees, and one doesn't know. The committee receives regular reports with the budget and financial status, seven strongly agree, one agrees. The committee has a public relationships, public relations plan for the school system, five strongly agree, two agree, and one doesn't know. The committee encourages the inclusion of community members as much as possible in the decision-making, four strongly agree, three agree, and one disagrees. The committee works cooperatively with other branches of municipal government, four strongly agree, and four agree. The school system regularly reports its own progress and accomplishments, six strongly agree, two agree. Committee members receive sufficient information far enough in advance to prepare for meetings, six strongly agree, two agree. Public input is welcome and according to policy, seven strongly agree, one agrees, full and sufficient debate is allowed, six strongly agree, one agrees, and one disagrees. Discussion is focused on issues, not personalities, six strongly agree, two disagree. Physical setting is...
Two agree.
Two agree.
They agree.
Okay, sorry, two agree.
Everybody's focused on the issues.
Yep, six strongly agree, two agree, sorry. Physical setting is conducive to productive discussion and decision-making, six strongly agree, two agree, and meetings are frequent enough to prevent overcrowded agendas, six strongly agree and two agree. Any questions or comments on the results from anybody? Ms. Delai.
Do we know, I think by my count, eight out of fourteen, so six didn't respond, that's barely a majority. Do we follow up and try to get everybody's input? This is very important, I would think, assessment of our roles as school committee members, so I was just curious.
No, I don't think we ever really get 100% of it. You know, committee member wants to fill it out, they do, if they don't, they don't. I can tell you, I've never filled one out in 23 years, and I don't intend to. I don't introduce to the committee the new representative from Raleigh, Mr. Valgula. Welcome to the Whittier Tech School Committee. I don't know if you wanted to say anything or not, but if you do, the floor is all yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little bit of myself, I'm actually currently a junior at Marion Mack College, double majoring in political science and criminal justice. Obviously, trade is such an important aspect in societies right now, so many jobs available, good-paying jobs, and it's so important for young students to get involved in all trades. And as long as I'm here, I'll work tirelessly for all students' interests in pursuing their career.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, look forward to working with you, and I will reach out to you so we can set some time to get together and go over kind of policies, procedures, and give you a rundown of the important ones.
Thank you, sure.
Next up, reports of the special committees, executive doesn't have one, instructional and personnel, Ms. True?
No, we haven't had...
Plan operations, Mr. Murphy.
We did not have a meeting until this evening. We went over a lot of items with Bob, a lot of electrical outlet outages, and we've got a project, an exploratory project coming up during school vacation on the wastewater treatment tanks, to find out what kind of shape they're in.
All right.
And that'll take up most of the week. So next month, we'll hear the results.
Thank you. Salary and negotiations, Mr. Early.
Yes, we've had many meetings, and we have many meetings ahead of us. We've got a lot of moving parts there.
Policy, Mr. Irvin's not here, it's the second and final, so I'll do it for him, second and final reading of the graduation requirements, which are in your packet. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the graduation requirements?
So moved.
Motion by, was it, Mr. Connors?
Second.
Seconded by somebody over here, Ms. Coppinger. Any discussion on the graduation requirements? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Slavoski?
Yes.
Passes. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Fitzgerald, seconded by Mr. Early, all in favor of adjournment?